Thank you.
Go ahead and call the meeting to order two. Now, this is the final cut. This is what the state said we could have and all that.
Yes. Well, they haven't, uh, we're asking them to approve it. They have not.
Okay.
So that, this is what we're asking.
So we're adopting that this is what we want them to approve?
Yes.
And then when they approve less or more, do we don't adopt that?
They won't approve more.
Oh, I know.
But they might, they may have us to cut.
Well, we've seen that before.
Yeah, just about every year.
So the purpose of this meeting is to adopt, correct, this budget that we have, Janice has set up to send to the state, correct?
Yes.
Okay. Meeting was, uh, let's see.
If you want to read.
Oh, this is last one.
The fund name and how much you are adopting.
Okay.
You want to read that?
Okay. Fund code zero one zero one to general adopted budget one hundred nine thousand thirty dollars. Adopted tax levy one hundred and two thousand sixty-eight dollars. Adopted tax rate is two point four one one four. My question is, uh, adopted budget was one oh nine, adopted tax levy, is that added to, that's not added to, correct?
No.
Is that's just a hundred and two thousand of that one hundred and nine, correct?
Right.
Okay. Local road and streets six thousand, adopted tax levy zero. Motor vehicle highway, hi Bob, now what do you have? Fifteen thousand, adopted tax levy zero. Cumulative capital imp cigarette, imp, it's a small person. Uh, cigarette tax fifteen hundred dollars. Uh, adopted, total adopted budget is one hundred and thirty-one thousand five hundred and thirty dollars. And adopted tax levy out of that is still a hundred and two thousand sixty-eight dollars. Adopted tax rate two point four one one four. Edit is twenty thousand dollars. Code nine, ninety-five hundred. So I'll make a motion we accept the adopted budget amounts. Motion been made, properly seconded, all in favor say aye. Aye. All opposed say the same.
Did you read the minutes to?
I'm just reading budget.
Well, this was the budget.
Oh.
Hearing minutes right there.
Oh, these are here? Okay. Yeah, we've adopted the budget, so that's good. Now, we're gonna approve the minutes from September the fourteenth. Meeting was called and ordered at six forty-five P M. Council members Buddy Strunk, Kathy Campbell, Scott Cushing, and Court Treasurer Brenda Brown were present. See list for additional attendees. Council met for the public hearing on the upcoming twenty twenty-four town budget. After no petitions were offered by the public and objection to the budget, Council President Buddy motions to adjourn. Hearing at six fifty-five P M. And Council Kathy Campbell seconds three ayes. So I'll make a motion we accept the minutes from the September fourteenth budget meeting.
Second then?
Motion been made, properly seconded, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed say the same.
Diane's a two week in.
Okay, good. All right, we got ten minutes. It's recess time. Call a meeting to order. Everybody had a chance to look for the minutes? You guys have a chance to look at the minutes? Everybody knows Scott. Brenda, you know Scott? Here's our newest town board member, Scott Cushing, Brenda Hind.
Hi.
That's my sister, Rob Diane Moser. You know the Mosers, down in, uh, North Main. Bill Tandy. The vacant house, uh, on three nineteen South Main Street with yard violations was the one that, uh, the people moved out of. They said here that, uh, council requested a certified letter along with the town ordinance four dash two thousand thirteen be mailed to the owner. Did that, was that?
I'm sorry, she ever?
Yeah. So that one, thank you.
And I can show you the response.
Oh, there was a response. It said, yeah, let's see the response. Oh, you, so you sent the letter to them?
We sent the letter to.
G I S, right, 'cause it's on G I S.
Yeah, uh-huh. And she signed for what I did.
Remember that?
Yeah.
Okay. Uh, the individual said, this is the letter received after they received this certified letter. It says, I filed bankruptcy in March two thousand twenty-three and it went through in June. I now no longer own or am responsible for anything since it went back to the bank. My attorney added the utilities with the house and the bankruptcy. If there are any questions, call, and there's a number. And it was signed by the owner. I don't need to say his name.
And he sold the owner's.
Still shows the owner's G I S, correct?
Beacon.
For beacon?
Yeah, both.
So we need, just need to find out which bank it went back to so we can start sending the bank letters to mow the grass or, or follow the ordinance and file them for not mowing the grass.
Well, here is that. I sent a, a letter to Adam's office to, um.
You sent this to the bank you sent it?
No, this is to Heather.
Oh, okay, to our attorney from Brenda.
Yeah.
That's right. I don't know, but I want to read this.
Can't, can't be behind me.
He's got my back, so I don't have to worry about it. You got my back there. You got my back?
I had to run in the truck and grab something.
Mine's at home, so I didn't find my money.
So we did get our attorney involved, sent a letter to him to let him know what was going on.
Okay, and right here is the response.
His response, I can read his response. In light of bankruptcy filing a new account should be commenced as of, uh, February twenty-third, two thousand twenty-three. All bills services incurred on and before are uncollectible unless the lien has already been filed, which I think it probably had, correct? All bills incurred on, after two twenty-three of two thousand twenty-three should be on a new account and are collectible. Uh, as for grasses, yes, send a letter and ordinance, and if the same is not remedied by the homeowner, go about cutting and placing a weed lien on the property. The bankruptcy just protects, uh, homeowners for matters incurred and owed on two, February twenty-second, two thousand twenty-three and before. It does not protect them, him moving forward. I didn't want to read it all.
So, because it's still in his name, he's liable for the weed lien and cleanup.
Right.
Sounds like it.
Well, my thing is you put a weed lien on it and if, when it, the bank does.
They pay it.
They'll have to pay it, yeah. Before it gets so, so good.
It just seems kind of odd if you don't reaffirm a debt, your, your debt is discharged, period. I don't understand how he, how, his reasoning on bankruptcy.
I don't know. It's a new world we live in.
To crack their grass.
I think so.
I mow the neighbor's grass next door to me that's not lived there forever and ever. I mow their grass in the front and back.
I'm glad you brought that up. Did you ever get ahold of a lady about that five, six, seven, eight-year-old permit that she's got on her, on North Main?
Oh, no. No, still have to go.
Okay. Just a friendly reminder.
I'll try to get, get to that next week or so.
You need a reminder?
She hasn't reminded her. He'll remind you. I was trying to.
And it may take a while for that to transfer in over there at the courthouse. 'Cause they don't, they don't keep that record up very good.
Which?
The, uh, tax records.
Oh. The last month, we decided to table the decision about which cars to keep and which cars to get rid of. Unlike for all three of us to be present, so we will address that again at the next. We had received a sample of an ordinance, uh, regulating open burning in the town of Greensport. There again, I want all three of us to be present. We'll probably end up having to have a executive session meeting on that and talk about if we're gonna adopt it or not adopt it, or what changes need to be made. And if there's nothing else, I'll make a motion we accept the minutes from last month's meeting.
We gonna talk about any more except the?
If you've got, yeah, if you've got something to talk about, that's why I asked you first.
Okay. One point, we had talked about some new cameras. I know we got two of them we put up here, and you said something about we just want to get another one.
Yeah. You want another one for the back? For the, to face towards the?
Parking lot area, garage. Yeah, I thought we had talked about that.
They, the picture looked pretty good on them. It also said something about, uh, possibly having the sewer plant, is that correct?
We got a camera. There is a camera.
We got plenty of cameras out there then, or?
Well, I don't know. Do they have Wi-Fi out there?
I.
Yes, they should.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
So, I mean, what, um, what, I don't, I don't know what kind of camera they have out there.
They've just got one that sits above the door and points toward the gate.
Is it the same as these?
No.
Who monitors those?
Well?
'Cause they're kind of useless if somebody's not monitoring them.
Well, I mean.
Normally you won't monitor until you have an issue, do you? I mean, is it something you, we need to set up a monitoring schedule or something?
Like, like the ones that he set up here, that alert will come straight to me.
When there's something.
That's not like that out there.
Well, I mean, we could add Blink out there. That way, it could be part of this, it'd be part of this system.
Yeah, 'cause he said we could add, I forget how many cameras.
Well, you, no, it's twenty-five on Blink.
Oh, wow.
Yeah.
On, on the Blink four, either Blink four generation, they can add twenty-five. So, and we'll have Anita watch them all of them.
That's good.
Well, you never know.
She doesn't watch TV, she watches Blink.
Well, I watch another one.
But we for sure want to get at least the one more here, though, right? And then look at possibly do that.
On something like that, I, I mean, you might as well get like a pack of three or whatever.
Yeah, put two out there.
But we'll have to get a new, um.
If you buy a three-pack, I think it comes with it.
Oh, the gateway?
You're talking the, the thing, the thing that's plugged in?
Yeah, thing over there?
Yeah.
Yeah. And then you can still set it up to come to the same.
Same account?
Yeah, it's just you name, so you name it sewer plant.
Right.
Name this one the whatever, and the next one whatever.
That's good.
So would that, would, uh, would that be okay then? Just go, go back to Best Buy and get a pack of three of those?
Do you remember what they cost? I, I always like.
One eighty, if like, one, one eighty-nine or for, for, for the three-pack?
Ballpark two hundred dollars.
Yeah. So you put one out here and then put two out, out there as a sewer plant?
I'll make a motion we do that.
I'd like that, just so I know it's covered.
We can go Best Buy and do that then.
Yeah, I'll make a, okay. Motion been made, properly seconded, and to go ahead and let Rick pick up a pack of three cameras for roughly two hundred dollars. Say one for here and two for out there, or two for here and one for out there?
I think they said one, one for here and then two for out there.
I'll just go put one on the back of the building that just faces the whole, it'll cover the whole garage.
Motion been made and properly seconded, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Post carried.
Shame our meeting wasn't before Prime Day.
Yeah. Also, the, the speeding on, uh, South Main Street, has anybody had a chance to talk with them about what we were talking about, like coal patch or something? You know?
No. I, I haven't seen Doug, so I don't know if you.
Well, I'm, I'm, that's kind of what I do sometimes when stuff like that comes up, I talk. Uh, yeah, Doug agrees with me. Coal patch is not gonna do it. And I said, well, now, I was told that, uh, where Rick lives, that they put coal pads down twelve years ago, and it's still good.
Eight years ago, yeah.
No, you said twelve. We got a document.
Have it worked out, I mean, try, I don't care what you guys do, but try something. Try something, and it's, I mean, uh, I like the stick-on rumble strips. I mean, you guys, you can get, you can just give a dollar amount, go try something. 'Cause, but you do got, but you do got to buy signs, though.
Yeah, you, yeah.
Unless you feel like.
If it's a speed bump.
Bump, yeah.
I don't know if you had to for a hump. Yeah, Bill?
It's posted at twenty-five mile an hour, and if you drive down through there at twenty-five mile an hour, it feels like you're on the interstate. That's really fast, isn't it?
My wife, I was at me, 'cause I, I go like twenty mile an hour out there, 'cause I'm nosy. I just like to do what I have to do properly. Twenty-five seems fast. Uh, I know, we have, we've spoke before about speed limits, and, and I, I can't remember where you said years ago that you, you can't raise it, but you might be able to lower it or vice versa.
I think it's twenty.
Can't go below twenty?
For the street. Twenty-five, twenty-five street.
That's the lowest you can go?
Yeah.
Without an engineering study.
Yeah, then, if not, if you want to pay for an engineering study, then you can, you know, to prove why you, you need to go lower than that.
I'll stand out there and yell that if you want me to.
Well, that, that might get you rolled over. I had to have that to happen.
Some guy went in a truck that was going real fast.
Not to defend anybody or anything, but it's just like I was down in the north end a half hour ago, and you could see people come down there and roll to that stop sign down there, roll right through Mineral Springs where it comes in. Uh, my Bill's mom and my house there, I've seen them take that, where they should be stopped, take that curve at twenty, twenty-five mile an hour and go hit the other curve and go around. I don't know if there's an easy fix to any of it, and if you start, uh, I, I agree, especially on South Main, 'cause it is a pretty good stretch. If there was some type of a hump or bump, it may slow them down, but it's not gonna, it's not gonna fix it, all the problems that we have.
No, because then they're gonna say, well, uh, halfway down, they're still speeding up.
I've seen them come by from Mineral Springs or around that curve right there, my house come by, my house looks like they're running thirty or forty, but I'm sure it's probably twenty-five. 'Cause like Bill said, twenty-five in a street, and the main thing on South Main is all the children we have down there. We usually don't have a lot of children, but the town's coming back.
They fly over that, and I tell the kids, keep to the side, but, you know, they don't always listen.
You always have a stop sign before the railroad tracks.
Why? They don't use them.
I, I, you know what? I, then I have no idea what to tell you. Somebody, somebody stay out there with a sniper rifle. I mean, 'cause that's about the only thing you're gonna do, and if you can't, I mean, if people are gonna break the law.
We're not gonna buy the cops here with another sniper rifle. Don't go there with it.
Wait, another one?
So that means if I have a sniper rifle, I can shoot the tire out and don't get in trouble?
Ask him, don't ask me that.
According to Buddy's law.
I mean, nobody knows how stop signs.
Right. I mean, yeah, I mean, uh, I agree, a bump or hump is probably the best. We just need to find out which is, uh, makes more sense and what they cost. That one we had over there in the alley between, uh, Main and Green, uh, where, uh, I and Steve's house, that alley there, it was good until it got ran over by the snowplow. And like I said last month, you don't want to have something this high that is fastened to the road, because if the snowplow don't knock it loose, you're gonna tear up a sixty-eight hundred dollar snowplow. We don't want to do that either.
Well, but there, well, there's other techniques other than putting humps in. You can actually go below grade where it's flat and you, you, it, I don't know, like gouges out a pattern in the gra, in the asphalt. I mean, I, I'm not a street guy, so I don't, I don't know, but.
None of us are, none of us are.
It's one of the guys I work with, suggested, he used to work for R P D, he suggested, uh, channels or whatever.
They've got, they, they got a machine that does that for asphalt, 'cause I've seen him doing it there in Greenfield in one of the parking lots. Almost like a grinder with a die in it that just grinds a pattern out in the asphalt. So when you go across it, it's pretty rough unless you're going.
Basically reverse speed bumps, but you do like multiple ones. They're not as deep, I don't think.
Bill, you know anything about that? Bill, you're kind of in that line of work, but.
Yeah, Milestone has a machine that does that. It goes on the front of a skid loader, and it'll cut them about sixteen inches wide and about every foot. But it's, they won't cause as much damage to a, a vehicle, but you wouldn't have to worry about it when you're plowing. But I don't know that it would really slow them down. It'll make some noise, but if they're going to speed, they're going to speed.
Can we start with some speed limits of twenty-five instead of?
It is twenty-five.
And that's the longest you can go?
That's you.
It's not what they want.
Yeah.
As soon as you go over the tractor, there's a sign there in front of that first house.
If I'm mistaken, it says twenty-five, and it says right below it, children at play.
In front of my house, yeah.
Yes, over here too.
Uh, and I've said in the past, if you see somebody speeding, get their license number if you can. I know that's hard to do sometimes. I can't see myself well enough to get it, but, and Rick will address it. He has in the past.
I stopped that guy with, uh, Mr. Bus Driver, and he swears up and down that he was not speeding. I go, hey, I didn't, I didn't see you. I'm just saying, all these people down here are watching you go by. I don't know if you know.
Tell them he still goes that, just as fast down this way, too.
You're not really worried about the north side.
Evidently, none of you guys are.
He's speeding anywhere fast.
He what?
He's speeding anywhere fast.
Where are you? So.
They're keeping on north side too.
So what are you gonna try?
How would we go about trying to do what you're talking about, Bill? Who would we notify on that? You know?
I'd get one, go to Milestone. Eddie on pavement, Eddie runs one on Pavon Cruz. He probably has more information.
Eddie, reading?
Yeah. Or call the office out there by, on Chet's Boulevard.
Yeah, you could do it almost in, like, probably like three different spots, you know, like, uh, near the tracks, in the middle, and then down by the stop sign where they're coming the other way. I mean, I wouldn't want to do the whole road that way, 'cause then by, we'll just have.
Would be back to where we were before we paved the road.
Yeah, we could just go out there and just chip it back up again with potholes.
What's this called, about it, to do this?
What, would that be called again, Bill?
It's probably just a rumble strip grinder. I don't know the proper name for it.
And then, then later on, if you want to take them out, you just pull the last, you just pull up the last ball again.
And how close together would you put them? How many would you put?
The machine does it. Machine spaces them.
And how many would you put on South Main, though?
I, I would ask the guys that know that business. I talked to Milestone about it.
She would put them on, walk in the county, you say they're speeding there too?
Well, yeah, they're gonna speed anywhere things be.
I'm gonna say, and try it there if it makes sense, and then do it all over town. If it doesn't, if it doesn't do anything, I wouldn't spend the money to go do it everywhere else.
Even on streets, or is it, I see, I see, run that stop sign.
But at least then we don't have to worry about destroying the plow or anything like that. We don't have to worry about.
You're right, that, that would never be a problem with the plow, at least.
I'll try to make a call to Milestone.
Be concerned about that. I would want to.
I mean, they can either find out where we can rent one or rent, or, and then.
I wonder if we can rent one?
Huh?
I wonder if we could rent one?
People are gonna get upset because we're tearing up the road.
Yeah.
Well.
They can calm down.
They're gonna get upset about something.
You're right, you're right. What they do best.
Anything else, Scott?
We already addressed the three nineteen.
Yeah.
On that, and then there was something in here about, uh, what? One seventeen.
Okay, that's, that are on the corner of Main and Carriage. The people living in the north end know where we're talking about, Opal's old house. Thank you, thank you. I meant to bring that up anyway, 'cause I underlined it, but I didn't. I called and said, uh, we met a citizen here at last month's meeting, uh, voiced her concerns because, uh, says although the new owner has done some improvements to the yard, she says it still needs to be a lot more done. I agree. She told council that Duke Energy employee told her that the electric could not be turned back on due to defective wiring going to the house. Says council will follow up on these concerns. I did call Duke Energy and talk to a lady, and she said the power is on in that house now. There was nothing wrong with, I don't know who told you that, but, uh, she checked it and she called, uh, the guy, and he said, yeah, there's power on there, so. Who knows? I mean, that house is not in great shape. You know the one we're talking about?
I had a guy contact me.
Well, and it's been sold two or three times, and I can't believe it's sold for what it's sold for to begin with.
But you can have the power pole.
Excuse me?
I think we can have the power pole.
Well.
Fitz got it.
Duke went out there and, 'cause somebody called them, and the person said, when Duke come out there, the guy told her, said, we can't, uh, we're gonna, can't leave power on it because it's unsafe, but it, that's not the case, 'cause I called Duke and she ran, uh, uh, the dispatch and all that and said, no, the power was turned on. There was no record of it being unsafe to where it couldn't be turned on.
Who owns it?
Uh, who owns it now? Need it, do you know?
Yeah, uh, Lawrence, uh.
Oh.
Lawrence. So I, is his last name?
Um, Olivier?
No.
We can check into it. I think if, if it's got.
You know what? If they can put a.
Well, I would think if they had bad wiring to do, it was to turn it on, wouldn't have turned it on.
If that house ain't condemnable, I, there, then no house should ever be condemned.
That's true.
But.
Offered a house next door to us by.
If the wa, wiring.
Thirty thousand dollars is what they wanted.
Tear it down?
You have to tear it down and have the land, thirty thousand dollars.
And we, in Hicktown, when they pull the wiring, if it's out there more than a year, uh, they get charged for me to go down and inspect it to turn it back on. And if it don't pass the inspection, we don't turn it back on.
Now, does he really own it, or is he a guy who's buying it on contract with some other guy?
He's the one who's.
Who knows a guy who buys it on contract?
He's the one that is on beacon and G I S as owner. And he was selling on contract, and the contract didn't go good, so he made a guy.
I can find that.
So as far as I know, it's empty right now.
If he's paying his bill.
And Austin Lawrence is paying the utilities on it.
Paul's gonna look into it, make sure, see if the guy's paying his bill, if he's got the power to it, what's going on. But like I said, was you here with, did I, did I make the call from here?
Yes.
Okay. I thought I did.
Yeah.
That's what I can do.
The guy, the guy contacted me and wanted to know what he could do with it. He was planning, thinking about purchase. What he could do with that lot.
Be a nice little.
Uh, plant grass on it?
Tear the house down.
Just expand the yard.
Yeah.
So you're going to see if.
I'm with you too. I'm with you.
What about the, there was a discussion about fence and blocks if you have some vehicles, anybody, how's that coming? Over off of, uh.
Oh, Brandy's house? I haven't talked to her since, uh.
Well, it said here that she was in the process of building a fence. Is that still?
Right, uh, the, uh, the actual holdup was getting the line marked from, who do you guys have in here? Duke? Or who do you guys have for power?
Duke.
Yeah.
Duke, uh, Duke would not locate on her, on their property for some reason, so they, they end up getting hold of a company that does that kind of stuff, that locates, and they got it marked, 'cause it goes underground, power line to their garage, so, uh, they got that part marked. So they should be starting.
So it's still progressing?
Yeah.
Okay.
They got the fence and stuff, I think piled over there, and it's some of the four-by-four post.
That it?
That's it on the whole, on the.
Only minutes? All right, that's the case. I'll make a motion. Anybody have any other questions? Only minutes, alright, that's a case, I'll make a motion, anybody got any other questions about the minutes or discussion of what's already been talked about on it? If not, I'll make the motion that we accept the minutes from last month's meeting.
I'll second that.
Motion's been made and properly seconded to accept the minutes from last month's meeting, I hold a favor, say aye.
Aye.
So, motion carried, thank you. Appearance by citizens, we got citizens here. Brenda, you was first. What's up, got anything, what's going on?
We want chickens.
You want chickens?
Yes, we want chickens.
Currently, as people know, it is in our ordinance that there are no chickens allowed.
Yeah.
Uh, anytime somebody comes with a request, uh, I feel we should look into it, and we will. Uh, I know that uh Richmond allows chickens, and I know from what I've seen, do they have them over there? Lewisville has chickens. Excuse me?
Hens only.
Hen, right, hens only, same way it is, that way you don't have a rooster waking you up at five o'clock in the morning. And if I'm not mistaken, Richmond has a permit fee or something.
There's a lot of stipulations.
Yeah, and I know the limit was five hens, I believe, in Richmond. So that's something we would uh need to redo our ordinance. Uh, that'd be something else that uh we could have an executive meeting and uh the board discuss that. Uh, I tell you what, would uh put a little emphasis on it if we had a petition maybe. And people uh went around, had people sign the petition. I know the last time it was addressed, uh, the major thing about. It not, them not being wanted was airborne illnesses. I don't know how, how prevalent that is. But I'm all for looking into and discussing it.
I don't think it's that big of a issue.
Some eggs is so high.
Excuse me?
It take a long time, go to pay for all the pens and stuff you'd have to put up.
What are you talking about?
Well, on the stipulations, you have to have a certain size rock, you have to have a certain size pen and.
You have to have whatever we decide you have to have, and I don't know that, I know there was a lady up on thirty-eight on Pearl Street that had chickens. They weren't bothering anybody, but like I've said before, one of her neighbors complained. Being it wasn't the ordinance at that time, and we tried to, we drug her feet a little bit, she ended up having like ninety days to find a new home for them. Uh, but that doesn't mean we can't readdress it.
It's kinda like the way we did ours, 'cause they had the same concerns, was the ordinance is still there. They have a temporary variance that can be pulled if. The, the chickens aren't kept the way that the ordinance says to keep them, if the conditions are determined to be unhealthy. Before they can get their permit granted, they make the marshal go over and inspect the chicken pen to make sure that. It's actually enclosed, and then, you know, I say, yeah, it's, you know, there's no, no way the chicken can get out. Okay, but anytime if, if we get complaints, then I have to go, me or one of the deputies has to go over there and look at the. The pen, if they wanna play the you're not coming on my property game, then their permit, their variance is, is pulled and.
Well, that would have to stipulate in the ordinance, 'cause if you have a pen, you gotta, it's gotta be where somebody can come in and look at it.
It's, it's kinda the way it's laid out, so it's very temperamental, I guess you would say, if they don't. If they don't abide by the rules, then it, then there's no more variance allowance.
There again, like any other ordinance, you're right, if, if you write a ordinance, you have to follow the ordinance when you have issues with it.
Is there any way we can get a cop?
Oh, I can email too.
Yeah.
I got a lot of sample ordinances on chickens, I've been saving them.
Be nice to have one that we can kinda.
Okay.
Work off of or whatever.
I've got sample.
I know Richmond is like your, the maximum is five.
I, I like the, the hens only, because you are in town and everything, and you really only need the hens for the eggs anyway.
Well, you wouldn't be, you'd be surprised how many people say, well, how are you gonna have eggs if you don't have them?
Sure. Yeah, that's, yeah, that's how you get chicks.
I got, I got chickens that live next door to me, and McCarthy's has a no chicken policy, but I don't really, I don't really complain. 'Cause the chickens rarely get out, and if they get out, my dog takes care of it.
And you have chicken dinner on Sunday.
Well, he did, I didn't, but yeah.
There's a permit they have to obtain them from the town, right?
On variants, they have to come to the, they have to come to a meeting, just like any other variants. And they have to petition the council to give them a variance to allow them to have chickens.
Permission, is there a fee assigned with it? They don't have to be.
Five dollars, I guess, it's just enough to make it legal.
I think Richmond's got a fifty dollar permit fee annually or something, I heard, I don't know how true that is, but I did hear.
Wow.
It, it's just a means of, and I'm sure the guy that they're paying to go check these pens to make sure that they're in compliance. He's probably a Richmond city worker making, you know, twenty dollars an hour, so they gotta charge fifty to pay the guy, you know, his gas money to drive around.
I don't think it'd be that big of a deal, because you, you're not gonna have that many people in town having chickens, so I don't think, I don't see it.
I know, it's as expensive as uh eggs are.
Yeah.
Five chickens is a lot cheaper than buying eggs all the time.
Another Amish church.
Said a pen was.
Do what?
A lady up on Pearl Street said that the pen that she wanted was seventeen hundred dollars. I said, well, you buy a lot of eggs for seventeen hundred dollars.
I don't, I don't eat that much eggs, so I couldn't, I wouldn't know.
There's a big difference between.
Now, now bacon's something different.
Store the eggs you get from somebody that's raising chickens.
Oh, I was.
Cause you crack an egg from the store, it just goes, you crack an egg from somebody that's raising chickens, it just stays right there where it's supposed to.
Yeah, uh, but uh, how many chickens do you got? Five, just, just five chickens? I mean, I don't know.
That, yeah, that's something we'd have to. I wouldn't think.
That's why I'd like to see like other ordinances to see kinda what they did or whatever, based on what they have.
I don't know, I don't want somebody going to the chicken egg seller.
Someone might get three, four out of when, when they're.
See.
A, a day?
Oh, yeah.
Like Erin, when she.
I mean.
Had to get rid of hers, she thought it was a very good, and, and I'll bring it up when we talk about it. Uh, good way to teach the kids how to care for something, and that sometimes you have to raise your own food, so. She had a lot of good ideas, she really did, she just had a butthole that lived next door, wrote a letter that we had to in- investigate.
I, I agree, we have to have some sort of a limit on it, but I, I wouldn't necessarily.
Oh, yeah, if you don't have a limit, uh, you'll see. You, you could see you have a lot of.
Some sort of limit, then somebody's gonna have like twenty or thirty chickens or, or something like that, but.
There's a thousand of them north of the golf course up there in Hager.
Yeah. I wouldn't necessarily say five, you know.
We're working on one, it's gonna have more than a thousand.
Pretty much gonna be based on the size of their yard, the size of their pen.
Will you bring them back?
Yeah.
Yeah, there's a bunch of salesmen, and I got more.
Somebody who has a big yard, room for a big pen, maybe they could, maybe they could have fifteen, you know, and keep it clean. Somebody else with a smaller yard.
I don't know why anybody would, if, if the idea behind them is to, to, to teach your kids and to feed, eat off of them, I don't know why anybody would need fifteen. Uh, I don't know that you would have to have a half acre to have a pen, as long as the pen is, like you had said, was locked up. And they can't get out, and uh, I don't know that it would matter how big your yard was.
Well, yeah, because they produce a lot of poop, and that poop's gotta go somewhere.
They, they, they got, there, there's.
That's what we do, yeah.
There's limited, the stake is open. I'm working on one right now.
I'm putting on the garden floor, I put the river.
Bob said he's working on an or- are working on an ordinance or working on?
The variance for the guy to put one in.
How many?
Twenty thousand.
Twenty thousand?
There you go, twenty thousand, come to Greensport.
But uh, no, we ain't doing that.
It's like fifteen's not, before my wife got sick, we had thirty, thirty-five, um.
You live in the country too, right?
Yeah.
Free roving chickens.
It, and.
Yeah.
And the thing about them is, is they lay real hard for a year, so you might have fifteen. Seven of them you got this year, they're not gonna start laying for a while, the seven or eight you already got. How many of them are old, you know, more than a year old, so they're starting to taper off. You know, you, you, you kinda have to cycle them, and we would always, one year we'd get, uh, you know, Leghorn, you know, types. And then one year we'd have Reds and, you know, so we kinda like get a different, that way we could keep track of. Okay, you know, these fifteen are from this year, and these fifteen are from last year, and, 'cause you have to rotate them out, they're.
Yeah.
Uh, you know, you get maybe two really good years out of them if you're lucky, and then they're dead or.
This uh, guy that got the farm now, up there on Jones Road. He's got fifteen thousand, and they change them out every. Oh, I forget what the day is, but he's with a company out of Pennsylvania. They bring him fifteen thousand, they take his fifteen thousand, they switch them out every uh eight months or so.
Not the Tyson family, is it?
And they, and they, they strictly, this, this company's strictly for eggs, that's all they are.
Wow, so I think we'd have to take that into consideration too, if they gotta rotate chickens out, then.
Yeah, they wrote.
Whatever number, say we decided on, you might wanna double that to allow for that.
I don't know about, you know, being in town or anything like that.
Right. And I think that's the whole key there that we are in town.
And they do, they do slack off sometimes, 'cause I buy eggs off of him and, and uh. There's times that he don't have them.
He got fifteen thousand, he don't have eggs?
Sometimes.
Wow.
Oh, my gosh.
Of course, they don't lay, they don't lay that much.
Brenda, thanks for starting that, 'cause now it's started, and we're kinda on the, on the bubble where we need to look at it, and we will.
He uh.
A lot more chicken, I thought I didn't.
Oh, yeah.
Oh, yeah.
You're gonna find out, an ordinance is just not something you can just say, let's do this, okay, let's write it up, and it don't work that way.
It's good to look at, so, it's, it's good to do your background on any of them you're gonna write an ordinance.
Right, yeah.
You know, our federal legislators are notorious for, hey, this is a great idea, so they pass a law, but. It's like, okay, they pass a magazine ban, right, ten rounds, but a three hundred black outfit's in that same magazine. A four fifty-eight SOCOM fits in the same magazine, so the different sizes don't always equate to ten rounds, but they don't. Investigate before they, they make a law.
Yeah.
So, you end up with a bunch of people, maybe they're breaking the law, maybe they're not, maybe they're doing it intentionally, maybe they're not. It would, obviously, we want people to be compliant, but we have to make educated laws so that people can be.
Yeah, I just think, like, what I was talking about, it's like on the chickens and everything like that, with the numbers and everything. Know that there's gonna have to be a rotation or whatever.
But that's up to them to figure out, if you tell them twelve, then they better get six and count on in a year getting six more. 'Cause if they get twelve all at one time in a year, they ain't gonna have no eggs, 'cause they're gonna have to buy new chicks.
Yeah.
That's their problem to figure out.
Exactly, that's what I'm gonna say, that, once we write the ordinance, it's on them, if they get them, if the ordinance passes, and they get them, it's on them.
Yeah, but that was just something, 'cause I know we raised chickens when I was little, but I was so little, I didn't remember, I didn't recall what all of them.
That's how my grandma used to do.
I didn't know you had to rotate them out, which means you would need twice as many chickens. But we're in town, we can't have like old chicken.
Right, exactly, that's what I gotta keep away from. But we will, we'll talk about that, and you can go over some of those uh ordinances that she gave you that addressed chickens and uh.
Yeah, look, I might agree.
Well, uh.
Cause it, I think it'd be easier to, we're not starting from scratch, we can.
Well, yeah, but you wanna, to be honest with you, you, you kinda wanna look at a town versus a city.
Right.
'Cause Richmond's kind of, man, it, it's all in intertwined with everything.
Carthage or uh Lewisville, it's smaller.
Same as Greensport.
About the same.
About three fifty.
So he's gonna email, you need, you got my email, don't you? Oh, you sent it to Rick?
Well, um, I go print it out real quick, and you guys can have a copy right now.
You ain't gonna do anything?
Yeah, 'cause if it's more the same size as us, that's gonna be a little bit better for us to go on.
I do know. All about the country.
What'd you say, Brenda?
I, I was asking people in Lewisville, 'cause I said I had relatives there.
They.
But they're all dead now.
Oh, I thought you was gonna say, and they don't, they don't like to cop up. Okay, good, Rick's doing that, very good. What else we got? Nia?
I'm, I'm here with the chickens.
Alright, good, we will, I'm not gonna say that, uh, we'll let you know next month, it.
Okay, yeah.
We did a, we had to redo our pet ordinance one time, and it took over a year of us having extra meetings. To come to an agreement, because uh, one person specifically. Did not want to ban a breed of dogs, because they are known to be mean. Uh, so we, we battled that for a long time, long time, and we, we, we haven't banned any animal, any dogs. Our ordinance now says no barnyard animals, and that was part of it too, where chicken falls under a barnyard type of thing supposedly, but. I think the original intent was, I'm right, was hooked type animals, cows, pigs, uh, probably even deer. Do what?
Harrison.
Yeah, well, exactly, yeah, she had, but before that ordinance was written, she had two, she was allowed to, one or two, wasn't it, Ty?
She was grandfather clawed in, where she, what she had, she could keep.
What she had, she could keep, and once they go, you can't replace them. Anybody got anything else? Bill, got anything?
I just came for the chicken petition.
Well, I.
I've got no problem, I just wanna make sure we get it done right.
And like I say, I think it would help the cause, uh, to have a petition with people who signed it.
We can do that.
I'm sure that they'll get six in church.
Oh, yeah, yeah, I'm sure you will, but I think it would, like I say, I think it's just gonna aid us in the decision if we have something like that.
That's a good idea.
Especially with the price of stuff, they're right.
We can start pitching tomorrow.
Yes.
Then we need to, we need to have a gas company. You got it, Rick?
Yeah.
Not bad in Muncie, it was three seventeen up there a while ago.
Oh, yeah, I got it for three twenty-three in Richmond.
Gas, you don't buy gas?
Yeah, the sad thing about it though is what you just said, it's not bad in Muncie, it's only three seventeen, I poke gas at forty-five cents a gallon back in the day. Huh?
Ohio's like two seventy-seven.
Oh, yeah?
Where you going?
Me almost worked driving to Ohio, wish I had to go right past or something.
Sherry said she got a three oh five, three oh five, she was in Newcastle.
Yeah, a lot of times Newcastle seems to be cheaper.
Depends on where you go in Newcastle.
I like your swing.
Okay, Rick, when you're done messing around, we wanna hear your report.
Kinda young looking, no, it does okay.
I'm like what I want to, I turned eight, I'm gonna turn eighteen, you just might like what I want.
Thanks for.
So are you guys done discussing the chickens?
I think so for now, yeah. Okay, thanks for coming, did you sign?
Yes, sir, I did, she made me sign my name.
Well, come see me sometime.
I will, I got a bill coming up.
I, I just put my hand in the slot.
Oh, you could.
Thanks, Ty.
See you, Brenda.
Bye-bye.
Good night.
Okay, I can do, do a couple things, we're waiting on Rick's sewer plant, uh, operations report, Darlene's not here, so we don't have that report. Uh, evidently, we're still flushing, so things must be somewhat okay at the moment.
Darlene's a choir practice.
Yeah. Wastewater Treatment Plant Monthly Report, do we have any, you got a report?
No, I didn't.
Like I say, toilets are flushing, uh.
There's no big issues, we did get the. I'm sorry?
These are all pertaining to chickens.
I mean, one's the animal ordinance, and then one for the whole, all of them, then the other one is.
These are both Lewisville then?
Yes.
Thank you, alright, Mister Bush, would you like to hear what your police report, please?
Alright, yeah, installed the radio, laptop, printer, and scanner in the charger, so it's. It's pretty much, it's got everything in it except for uh my radar unit. And that'd be our, our, our last install. Uh, Ron and I went to the annual U S Attorney's Office Conference uh up in Annapolis.
Uh, enlightening, as you can tell, there's a lot of stuff going on in the world that's, that uh, uh is affecting law enforcement. So, good, bad or indifferent, this is the world we live in, so. Installed the camera on the, on, in the town hall and the PD and obviously I'm gonna go pick up another, another set of three. And we'll, we'll add some more. Um, ordered uh AED pads, the ones we had were expired by a couple of years. Because, I mean, if you don't use them, obviously, you're not, the pads are gonna go, go dry. So, uh, then we had to send one in for repair, the actual unit itself is covered under warranty. So, uh, they're fixing a internal component that went bad, so they'll be sending it back.
How many do you use AED?
Got two of them. And they were, they were, they were granted, where we get that from, Ron, was that Reed Hospital?
It was.
And they're like about fifteen hundred bucks for those things, so they gave us two of them. Uh, went to Micro Center, got Anita's computer. And uh. Ended up having to go to Best Buy because the computer's port is different than the monitors that she had anyways. And one of her monitor was acting up, so at, at some point Brenda went and got two monitors, so it's got new monitors, new computer. And then we transferred all the programs from the other computer to the new one, the emails. The desktop, all the software, so. Like I said, everybody uh looks at a town marshal, oh, this town marshal, you just go out and patrol and drive around and write tickets, no.
We know better.
I mean, your IT, fixing the toilet, whatever the case is for the small town, marshals do it all.
We have it again, it's Mayberry.
How is the new system working?
Hers, it's, it's doing pretty good, I mean.
I was wondering how it was all working, cause I remember last time.
Well, I'm telling you, it's, it's a, it makes you pucker when you're working on your system and then your computer powers down, right in the middle, you typing something. It makes you, it makes you nervous because. And then, you know, you hear about all these, and our uh virus software is up to date. But, but you, you hear all these uh, these takeovers, you know. Uh, a computer takeovers and hackers, you know, the ransomware, that's a holding computer, you know, holding computers. For ransom or they're not gonna lock it, you know, things like that and uh. You know, I was just talking to a guy at work today, there's a place in, near Annapolis called Johnson Controls. They do a lot of stuff like HVAC systems all over, all over the place, commercial and. Yeah, and uh, they got hit, yeah.
You just, I gotta believe though that a small town like this is not a really a good target.
No, it's an easy target though, hey, you're gonna pay us ten thousand dollars, we're gonna lock their computer out and you're just out of luck.
They all charge us ten thousand, we say we'll give you a sewer plant, you take sewer plant, we're even.
But luckily for us, our insurance, uh, we, your umbrella policy, I'm sure covers. That type of stuff. Yeah, it does, every, every town does, every town has that, every town has that insurance coverage, so.
Bill, you got something?
With the new system, can you take electronic payments?
All we got was a computer, our system is a computer.
Yeah, it's just a desktop computer Dell.
I think the, in the past, some people had, would like to have had that, but what they do, they end up going with a bank and a bank. The bank sends a check out.
But like you want to be able to come in and you use your debit card to pay it or a credit card to pay it?
I could not even come in, you guys just take it.
Oh, I, well, I mean, I just send.
Most of my bills just come out every month, I don't even touch.
Uh, you can do that now and it actually sends a paper check to, to here, you would never even have to come here.
He doesn't need to talk to his bank to do that?
No, you don't have to talk to the bank, you go, just go online and do a ba, do a ba, a, a bill pay. And the town of Greens Fork, your account number and just like you're paying any other bill and it, it sends them a paper check. Other places, they get the um electric, the um electronic transfer, the ACH. But we don't have that here, so it would just mail a, a paper check to you, so.
Yeah, you can schedule it.
You know, maybe it'd be nice if we could get that, all that wrote up where we could. Place it and let people know that, there might be more people wanting.
Yeah, I don't like, I don't like going to town hall and pay bills.
I wouldn't do anything like that.
But, it's just paying, it's, it's just like paying any other bill, like your electric or your cable. It'd be the town, town of Greens Fork and you put your, your account number on it and they act, it mail, it mails it. Their, your bank has a banking center that prints out the check and mails it for free to, and it, it comes right here.
Netco does that.
What I'm saying is that I, I, I wish we could have that wrote out to.
I can write something like that up.
Close to the round, cause people might elect to do that.
I just, I need to like take a picture, take a picture of someone's bill to give example, here's your account number, here's the address for the town.
That'd be great, you could do that, I appreciate it.
Town marshals even do that kinda stuff, hard to believe, man. Drive progressive. Yeah, but, so, uh, so that was a lot, a lot of this month's. Uh, activity is just working on the, on the cars and working on the cameras and the computer, that, that, that took up a lot, but. It's all done now though, so, and, you know, I think, I think me and Anita, you know, we probably spent like. Four or five hours when we were doing the cameras, that's just cause it was the first time we messed with them. But now we know how they, how they uh do add-ons, so. Takes like, it takes like fifteen minutes now to do a camera, you just gotta mount it, take two screws to mount it and then you add it to that gateway over there, that's about it, so. It, going forward would be a lot, a lot quicker and easier.
Okay, you got anything else Rick?
That's it.
Anybody got anything for Officer Bush?
Uh, it's under new business though. I was gonna ask if uh you were able to follow up on the dog issue. I kinda came home to that.
She, so, she, she got, she got cited by, by the sheriff's department, she got, so she actually got cited in the court over that. And then plus.
Do you know the outcome of her being cited in the court?
No, it's like November eleventh.
Oh, she, she'll have to go back?
No, she has to go to court. She has to go to Richmond, they're not citing her in the.
House, uh, Superior Three.
Yeah, Superior Three.
I, but I don't, yeah, the court date's not come up yet. She did, when I talked to her that night, she did mention she was trying to find someplace to take them. I did some checking, the, like, with the Great Peronese Rescue, but they are not taking any dogs right now, they're full.
No one is, no, no one's taking dogs. And see, and that's kind of the problem that I have right now, okay? If I find a dog like that, that, you know, running loose and that no one knows it, I can put it in the kennel. In, in Wayne County, I, I, I call up Jessie and she'll come and pick the dog up. As long as they don't know who the dog belongs to, they will not take a dog, like them dogs down there, unless they attack somebody. Which, which is what was happening that night. We're gonna be responsible to figure out what to do with these dogs when I catch them and put them in a kennel. It's not just gonna be calling the county, they're not gonna shit, they will not come get them dogs. Cause they have an owner.
I guess there's more than two. And this time it was the male, the.
Usually it's the female that's kind of, you know, kinda gets out there and wants to, you know, go running around, but, but uh. But however it works out, we're, the town's gonna be spending money if I have to impound them dogs.
Last I had heard that if a dog goes to Newcastle, that's the only place that has been taking them for the longest time, because they are a kill shelter. Well, I mean, I know, sure as you go, wow, uh, uh, but here's the thing, you know, we, uh, people put on there, found this dog, blah, blah, blah. We don't have a problem putting them there, we, number one, that's why we keep those locks, so, so they have to call one of us to unlock it. That way we know there's an animal there, we can know there's a blanket, we make sure they've got food, they've got water. But what they need to understand is even if it's not their dog, uh, what we will do, if we get a dog on a Friday, we'll keep it till Monday. It'll, we'll get somebody to. To take it, feed and water, we'll get Jessie to take it to Newcastle and they'll keep it, however. It says they'll do it up there and they'll kill it if nobody gets it. And people go, oh, I don't want it to die, then, then. Own it, raise it, love it, feed it.
That's the problem though, if we don't do anything, we're also liable now if the dog does attack and actually hurt somebody.
You're talking about the ones that have been reports on, right?
I don't know if we're completely liable, but we would be somewhat liable, because we did nothing. With knowledge that there's been issues.
If you know that.
Is, when your mother got bit, Richmond had knowledge of that dog being a vicious dog, Wayne County had knowledge of that. Dog, nothing came out of that, did it?
No, but charged it, charged it, got filed.
Oh, his insurance pays, insurance pays.
Yeah, we, we, we won the, the criminal case and the, that we didn't even go, he settled on civil, his insurance didn't go to court.
And we did find out that just homeowners insurance will cover in fact, correct?
Well, his, his, his in particular, but again, I have a hard time believing that they kept him. Yeah, because I have a hard time believing that they kept him insured. The following years, I, I don't believe it.
After the two incidences in Richmond.
He had lied.
He had lied on his uh application. So they, the insurance said they weren't paying and my attorney had told me, that's good. That works, I put it for us, cause that pallets, he maxes out at a hundred thousand. But the thing is, yeah, her homeowner's insurance is gonna cover somebody, but somebody's still gonna get hurt.
I didn't even know she'd even got, I don't know she's even got homeowners insurance.
That's the thing.
That's the thing, you can't. If the dogs are vicious, they get to go.
I didn't know those dogs by nature were vicious.
I, but tha- that's the thing, everybody I talked to said, oh no, they just, they just kinda walk towards you and make you feel uncomfortable. Cause I've asked numerous people over and over again when the dogs are out walking, and then this time it was Angela. She, you know, the dog, I don't know if it growled at her or was walking towards her or what, I, I do not know.
The dogs have been rushing people.
Rush, it does, never made contact with anyone though, but it has, doesn't make you hurt yourself.
So it's kinda lunging at people, it's not really just trying to bite them, it's just running towards them.
It's, but it's coming across the road. It's off the property.
These dogs are big, these are, so.
Well, it's off the property because it's not properly restrained, restrained like our ordinance says.
Like the state law requires.
That's why county wrote her a ticket, I mean, she, they, she had the leg to stand on.
So we, we will just keep an eye.
Ban dogs and allow goats. You ever hear anybody getting attacked by a goat? Come on now.
Oh yeah, everybody was attacking that.
A beautiful goat, it was a pretty goat.
Yeah, so I think Windburn said he forwarded all the stuff to you, so we can just follow up with that and then.
I also wrote her a, a, a local violation, so she got, she got a copy of that as well. Cause we brought her down here, uh, we called her at work. And she can't, she uh drove down here and we talked for a little bit and. I said, I said, you gotta get rid of them dogs, you gotta get rid of them. And be honest with you. You wanna be sympathetic and you wanna be helpful, but there's also a time where it's gonna say, we don't care. You're gonna get rid of them or we're gonna cite you in the court.
That's what the ordinance does. And you know, bless her heart, I mean, she, I think her heart was in a good place, she rescued those dogs from out, off an interstate or something.
And there's more than two.
Now, do they have a pup or something?
There was a litter of pups, but I think only one, two survived, one was, they got rid of one maybe, and I think she still got one life.
I mean, she, financially, she can't, even if the dogs were fine, she's not in a financial place where she can, needs to be taking care of dogs. And so everybody else is raising them dogs, cause the dogs are out running around on a regular basis.
But I just worried that, you know, nothing's happened yet really other than this attack right here, which, did she get hurt? But.
It still made someone, it still scared the crap out of someone and that's the problem, so.
They're big and they are Great Peronese, they are, they're big.
Yeah, they probably weigh a hundred and fifty pounds.
Buddy, we're gonna need to procure a large, larger rifle, I mean, it sounds like a good reason, I'm just gonna go with this.
Now you gotta be scared about my killer dogs, I'm about frightened. Be, be gonna put my dog guys out in a minute, you know, they're.
So, so the plan is to wait and see what happens with them with the court?
There ain't nothing you can do, because our, our ordinance is quite clear, they, they have to be given, they have to be. They, they have to be determined to be vicious. And then, they're given, then they're given the chance if it does again, then they have to have insurance and be chained up and, and it just.
Kind of what we did with the one with three seventeen, I mean, when his mother got bit that.
Well, no, that would've been a different story.
Yeah, but I mean, we pay more attention to it than what you were just saying with them. We checked his insurance, we made sure he had.
I mean, you guys see the dogs out, you live right across the street. Are them dogs vicious or are them dogs just big and they're out there just doing what they do?
Intimidating.
There's a big difference between a dog that's intimidating and a vicious dog. We've all been scared to crap when a dog comes out and growling, thinking it's getting ready to bite us versus a big ass dog just walking towards you. And he's not stopping.
I've been interjected every time and they went back. But they're rushing and it's hard to control your dogs.
Yeah, you can't, yeah, dog walking by.
Bigger dog, or another dog regardless of the size, he's got two good sized dogs. They may never cause any problems, but I can see it becoming a problem if another, they think another dog gonna attack them or you.
Well, I think Angela had her dog with her that night. That, so that, that's where the problem lies, is that the girl is not responsible enough to keep them dogs chained up. Whether they get off or not, that's, that's.
They need to be advanced.
Well, at what process in the ordinance are we that if we have any more issues, you can go down and find her, make it cost money and then tell. Then at some point make her get rid of the dog.
Yeah, I wasn't gonna write it, write her a local ordinance violation when she just got one from the county. I'm not gonna do, I'm not gonna double dip, but she got, she got the warning that, about her dog, dog running loose. There was, and uh.
Vaccination records?
Yeah, vaccination records, so.
Does she even have this, that she rescued them or not? See, that's what I was. She couldn't provide them readily.
And the county, and, and why the county didn't ask to check them is kinda odd, but. Yeah, cause he, he should've asked, you know, or maybe, I don't know.
That's a misdemeanor, that's why he didn't risk.
Yeah, that's a, that's an actual crime, so, she's gonna get rid of them one way or the other.
I just, I, I had told her I was gonna follow up here at the meeting or whatever, with it and everything and. I let her know upfront and everything like that, let her know who I was. And what position I was taking and everything, like I said, that dog's not that dog, but the other dog is charged out of this.
Well, the other dog, now the hips are so bad, I think it can barely move now.
You talking about the little black and white one?
The female.
The female version of the male.
The big one.
Yeah, the big, yeah, so yeah, the hips are so bad now, the dog can barely move now, so. That nature's kinda taking, yeah, sorry Anita, I mean, I'm up.
I think the black one.
Always doing his thing.
But I think it's got electric collar or something, cause if it gets the end of the driveway, I think it gets zapped.
That several faces go.
Yeah, it never goes past the drive, it went a little further the other day when I wa- was walking my dogs and I heard it yell. I'm thinking there's like an electric thing or.
I had, we did that, we, I bought the collar and I rented a thing where you can lay the wire six inches underneath the ground and. Uh, put up the white flags and we're reading it, it says introduce the dog to the flags, so I took. He was a good size, medium sized dog, I took him out, I said, white flag, baa, go to the next one, go, white flag, baa. All the way around the yard, I got a pretty good sized yard, so anyway.
Did you ever turn it on when you're doing that?
No, but I told the wife, I said, turn it on, hit the switch. And so, I, I uh take him up to it and he go beep beep. It was one of those where he would beep and then it would give you a mild shock and if you got right on it, pow, however you had it set. Well, he, it didn't take him long to figure out, it's just gonna hurt for a second, I can't do that dude, man, I'm alright, he would do that and I'd have to run him down.
For, to keep dogs on your property that's not, that's non-aggressive, that, those are, those those work well. For a dog that is aggressive, you do not want to rely on invisible fence.
Well, is he aggressive or is he just smart? It's just gonna hurt for a second.
Alright, you happy with that?
Yeah, yeah, I was just wanting to find out.
You wanna make a motion, we accept that police report?
I do.
He can make it and I'll second it, motion's been made, properly seconded, to accept the police report, all in fairness, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, all opposed, say aye, thank you. Doug's not here, I know Doug had been working up on Maple Drive, they've got done about done, don't they, Nita? About done.
About done, yeah, they need to know what they have to do once you grab themselves.
Right, he's uh, he got it all in place, I think he told me it was all in place and and what's the next step, just to cement over and it's full finishing?
Next spring, cement over.
Okay.
They've worked hard on it.
Brendan Lee?
Where's he go?
To buy their cardigan chickens.
Okay, Mr. Pollock, got anything for us?
Uh, I got two uh projects working. And uh everything else, like I say, I was contacting with that piece of property. My parent main and.
Wayne's one seventeen on the corner, main and carriage?
Yeah.
Okay, yeah, that's something that definitely.
And and also the corner property right here, the old grocery store, whatever it is.
Okay, what's going on with it?
Well, he wanted to know what he could do with it.
Can you sell it?
The owner.
Tons of people are trying to buy that from him.
Well, I don't know if same guy.
Well.
Chris Ball, was it?
Christopher Ball.
Chris Ball.
I I don't know Christopher, anyhow, he come, one of them buildings up there, he's talking about. Doing the uh, whether he could have the apartment upstairs and have a business downstairs.
Oh, that wouldn't be here. Yeah, that wouldn't be the bar, probably, there's not upstairs in there, it kind of is, but it's not.
Are you talking?
I don't know what building he was, but he he would.
Is his name Tharp?
Huh?
Was his name Tharp?
I don't know, he didn't tell me what.
Cause he um, the one on the corner.
Which one, the gray one, the hardware store?
The old hardware store.
I didn't know that.
I've been trying to turn that into a gentleman's club for two years and they won't let me.
I did one there.
I could make you guys millionaires, you just won't, you just won't give me the permit.
Uh, somebody told me back in the forties, thirties and forties, the train used to stop here and it'd bring people from Richmond and they would go down to that gray building and they'd have dances and things like that and where the. Bar was, uh, they, you could bring your kids and they'd go over there and they'd play and somebody would keep an eye on them, but you had to be back at the train by nine o'clock or you had to walk to Richmond. Back in the day, you know.
I mean, is that true? Anyway.
She was a teenager back in them days, well, yeah, they figured she'd be going to the dances and stuff.
Okay, Nina, we're gonna do, let you do your utility monthly income and disbursement, please.
He's pushing the limits. Okay, in September, we did take in fourteen thousand four hundred and forty one dollars, uh, but we dispersed twenty three thousand six hundred and sixty nine dollars.
Was there a certain reason why we had to go, I know we, a lot of times it's a little bit over quite that much, it's fifty percent. The parts, that air handler motor?
No, that that just come in today, it was twenty nine hundred or something.
Now, we had a, there was a big piece of something we paid for out there.
Yeah, but he said air handler motor, we just got paid for that today, uh, we had to pay Amston.
Yes.
Uh, forty two hundred and thirty dollars, that's our computer people.
They did, they did help out for about an hour, didn't they, Brenda?
Yeah, twenty nine.
And then we had to pay BBC pump and equipment, twenty eight, twenty four, that was for our pump. We're gonna have, and chemicals were three thousand dollars.
That's the price of doing business, you gotta pay them, you can't go and do.
It's gonna have to slow down or we're gonna be in a bad situation soon, really. We did have a little bit of uh cushion there, but not much right now, anyway, September the first, we had twelve accounts that were into ninety days delinquency. And uh the treasury owner had to record four new surlings because the others paid, and at present, there are thirty five outstanding surlings yet to be paid through the Wayne County Treasury Department. That may sound like a high number to some people, but that's not really high, at one time, we had it over a hundred, so.
How much money is that, thirty six liens, how much is that?
About twenty, twenty thousand?
That, one lien usually runs to us, uh, it'd be two months, uh. Sixty, sixty and ninety days that we record on it, plus uh we have to pay fifty dollars, uh, twenty five to record and twenty five to release, yeah. One ninety five, that's what it usually runs.
We'll take about two hundred dollars, two, maybe.
Yeah, roughly, yeah. We get two settlements. We get two settlements a year, uh, usually in June and usually in December, so. This year, uh, we have, so far, we have got in settlements twenty six hundred and forty one dollars and some change this year. I've got for this year for the last nine years, surlings, if anybody wants to hear it.
Nah.
Okay. In two thousand fifteen, though, we did get ten thousand dollars.
Think last year, I heard about the eight previous year, and the year before that, I heard about the seven previous year.
And well, in two thousand eighteen, we did get thirteen thousand on liens, but this year, we're gonna take in uh twenty six hundred and forty one dollars, but we'll get another settlement probably in December. We do need to slow down on the spending.
Well, I mean, I'm sure we will unless a pump goes out, all you do is replace it.
Yeah, you have to, you have to, it just, it takes a lot to get rid of the the waste.
That all you got?
That's it.
Thank you very much, I'm making motion, we accept Nita's sewer utility income and disbursements report.
I'm gonna second that.
Thank you, sir, motion's been made, properly seconded, all in fairness, say aye.
Aye.
The street report, Wayne Weaver and Rick Shepherd, uh, streets are still there.
Are they do, are they doing leads?
I don't know, I haven't, it seemed like he said some, told, may have told somebody uh that he was, they're probably gonna probably start that into next week.
Yeah.
I thought it was normally around the first of November, but I, it it should be before November.
Yeah, you're gonna want frost and stuff to start selling in, cause then it turns up.
And you know, our trick or treat is uh twenty eighth from five to seven, which is a Saturday. I did put it on social media and of course, on social media, people said, what happened? One individual said, what happened to the original day, I'd just like to go on record and say that Halloween is still the thirty first of October, and it's a Tuesday this year, but. Trick or treat can be whenever somebody decides it could be, and that's why we've decided. Excellent, Bob?
Do you normally come to town for that, Rick?
Huh?
Do you normally come?
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, he goes out and blow sticks.
Yeah, I mean, get out glow sticks, man, for, by the fact, I'm probably gonna buy a couple hundred glow sticks, forgot to, forgot to mention that.
You got Walmart grant? You leaving, Bill?
No, I'm letting Bob out.
Oh, okay.
Goodnight, Bob.
Alright, Bob, so you got Walmart money for that or what?
Uh, we got Walmart, Costco somewhere, something, got money somewhere, sewer plant.
No, ain't got no sewer plant, gotta be out there blowing money or something.
Yeah, oh, you know what, I I got an email from, from uh. Darren Rushville.
The gun shop?
Yeah, he said, if you, if you, if you're gonna get ammo, you better, you better be buying some ammo soon.
Yeah, we got plenty, okay.
Alright, let you know.
Is it going up?
It's gonna be going out.
Always.
Not gonna, they're not gonna be, it's gonna be, the stockpile is gonna be significant for.
Gotta send it on to Israel.
So you gotta send it, yeah, we're talking millions around ammo being going there.
Uh, I got a question before I forget, uh, why do we have a resume here?
Oh, that's a guy who, uh, do you know him?
Yeah.
So, uh, is he good or bad or, I I I don't know him personally.
I don't, I don't know him real well, but I've I've. Run, I've run across him when I was working in jail or whatever, he's brought people in before.
Alright, so, uh, that's a, uh, Jeffrey Glover, he, he was with Richmond for twenty something years. He was interested in being a reserve, so I just, I haven't done a background check or anything or talked to anyone, I just, he just happened to uh call me yesterday and we talked.
He's qualified.
Oh, yeah, he, he was on the drug task force for a lot of years.
Well, I mean, yay.
Yeah, for, so, he he lives right out of Centerville.
We had a few reserves, it wouldn't hurt my feelings at all.
He should be good because he's right now Reed Health Police Department, that's run by Kappa.
Yeah, he's, he's putting in his, his two week notice, I guess, so he's, he's leaving there.
Really?
Said Reed Health's gonna be.
That's why he's wanting to be a reserve somewhere else.
In Wayne County.
Huh?
They said Reed Health is gonna be the second largest police force in Wayne County.
They can, they can have it.
Oh, I'm serious.
Oh, yeah, yeah, it is, it, I don't know, they got, they've already got, I don't know, thirty, ain't they?
Uh, something like that.
You gotta realize though, they got a, they've got like a multi-million dollar budget from the hospital to, so, yeah.
But that's, that's spread out in more than one county though, cause they're in Fayette County too.
Yep, and I think they got one, they got, they're gonna be opening up one over in Henry County too. A little, a little, like a smaller type clinic though, but anyways, uh, he was arrested and I just cut, just kind of wanted to get your feel, and uh it's good that 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 Scott, Scott knows of him. I I haven't, I haven't talked to anybody yet, I haven't talked to, uh. Talked to anybody else about, you know, I I if they know him or not, I know that he was on the drug task force, I, I know that he left the sheriff's department in twenty twenty. I don't know if he just retired, he was done working there or. You know, he wanted to go somewhere else, I haven't gone into that part yet, I just wanted to throw to him out there.
Good.
Yeah, I'm curious to why he's leaving Reed Health.
Yeah, well, that's got me, that's got me questioning too, cause it pays decent, I think he would, he's probably like a lot.
He just pays nothing for reserves, right?
Right, no, he is, he's probably coming here because he's probably gonna do security somewhere else and make, probably make fifty bucks an hour doing security, and I say, hey. Uh, I promised him, I go, you know what, the town council is pretty liberal, just come in and do your, do your twenty plus hours, do it, you go, do it on your, do it on your schedule, but. Come in and do the time, they, they're, they're pretty liberal on, you know, uh.
It's hard to be too demanding on somebody you're not paying.
Yeah, I know, and it's, so, and then I've got a, another guy that, uh, I don't have his resume, but, uh. He owns a automotive business over there in Henry County and uh he just represents, he, he's got several, several year, separate, separate. Types of experience, he's got one with the Henry County Sheriff's Department and one with, with a Caddis, with Caddis, so, you know, so, and.
Small town cop, Caddis, correct?
Yeah, so, and so anyways, I'll, I'll, I'll get his information too by, by next meeting, that way Kathy'll be back and.
Great, I appreciate it, yeah, I, I've always said, uh, we need a little bit more.
I think it, we've always done better when we've had four or five guys on.
We sure get a little more coverage.
Right, and we got two cars, so it makes sense to kind of occupy the cars.
Yeah, I'm, yeah, exactly.
Well, I, I know he's definitely qualified, I was just curious as to why he was.
Can you do some inquiry as well, like, you know, when, when you're, when you're over there, talk to other guys and.
Yeah, I can, I can check.
Find out why he left, you know, just to make sure that there wasn't no issues, which I never heard anything bad about him, so.
I've never.
Yeah, but you know, just, but you, but you never know, but I, I've only heard good things about him, so. It's just nice having people know someone on a personal level.
Right.
I mean, cause here, cause here in Greensport, you don't have much buffer, if you come out here and you're, you got an issue with people, it's gonna be, it's gonna be a quick.
Yeah.
Quick response.
That just kind of surprised me because, I mean, he was making good money, both those other dogs.
We have, hell, he's with the sheriff's department, he started there and, he started there like in eighty nine.
Yeah, he was with the uh Richmond Police Department.
Right, for Richmond for, from eighty nine to.
Yeah, so he would have probably took his retirement, so he would have, probably got a pension coming in, so it's, I would imagine.
Between that and it. So.
Okay, great, thank you, I'm writing it here.
He may have retired and worked nights, but it says on here, he was a night shift sergeant too, so.
Right, well, I wouldn't want to be, after being retired, you go, go work for another department for, I told him here, he can come out whenever he wants.
I'm sorry.
Okay, uh, street, you got a copy of the street, uh, guys, what they did, they have been working on that storm drain up there, it's about done, last I'd heard. Well, Nita just said to wait for the gravel, settle the cement over, probably be in the spring, I don't know, well, I thought, kind of thought Doug. Told me it's gonna be a little sooner than that, but it is still being worked, uh, you know where we're talking about?
Where's he working at?
He had to make, excuse me, up on Maple Street, uh, last street going south before we go out of town, where Bill is, Bill lives up there and. He live in Elm.
He's back in God's country, he's got his own little.
Where the guy that has the gun shop is, or the gun?
Yeah.
Okay, yeah.
Almost across the street from him.
Okay.
Oh, talking about Brenda's house?
Yeah, it's Brenda's house.
Okay.
For the. Storm drain.
Did they put like a riser or something in there?
Yeah, they got that made up, they've got all that made and that's.
That's been like several years in the making, that's been what, five years?
Yeah, three, about three.
Yeah, he's had to make it, but it's coming along, uh, Rick Shepherd said he cleaned some street gutters on North Green. I know last week he was out on Main cleaning some gutters, uh, getting ready for leave pickup. There'll be a letter coming out about people not raking, when they rake the leaves out to the gutter, not to have those sticks or rocks, cause it, it tears up our machine, we're done. Doug has put on some uh screens that filters out a lot of that stuff, but. We've been lucky with it, I think, so far.
Something like that, what, the vacuum?
Leaf sucker. So. I'll make a, well, I'm not gonna make a motion, we don't have a report, I'm, I'm not gonna make a motion to approve a report we don't have, but that's what's going on with the streets. The storm drain in Maple we just talked about, speed humps and bumps we've been talking about, uh, what did we come out of that, we gonna, somebody gonna look into?
I thought you were gonna call back, what's that guy's name?
Karl milestone, Eddie Breeden.
I just, yeah, I, I probably just find out where you can get that machine at and then.
I got my note here. What'd you say, Bill?
Why don't you just pay them some humps?
He said special attachment.
If you pay with a manual, stop by the go room.
But I think that'd be, if we're good, that'd be great.
But if you, if you go below grade, then the plows go right over top of it and they would never have a problem with, with any type of damage being done.
Outside cameras, we talked about Rex go pick up the three pack, ordinance regulating open burning, have you had a chance to look at that?
Only a little bit.
Me too, I have, Bill, I know Bill, you kind of, did you look at the ordinance, the suggestion?
No, I didn't see that.
You just hear something about it?
I just saw it on your YouTube last week, last month, but that's just what freaked me out, was the thousand dollar fine thing, you're gonna make a lot of people in this town mad.
Well, yeah, well, hold on a second, what's the, what's the big regulation on it though?
I was just talking about uh changing the size of a fire, right, basically, right now, the way it is, if you've got a fire going, uh. As long as you're gonna stick with a hot dog on it, a marshmallow on it, it's considered a uh.
Cooking fire.
Cooking burn or whatever.
Recreational.
This one here, if I'm not mistaken, did it say something about ten by ten or, that's a bomb, yeah, that's not a, a yard fire, that's a big bomb fire. So, and all it is, is just somebody has written that up for us to look at, I'm, you know, I'm sure we would just, I would think that we would decide, it's something that's gonna be. That crazy, I mean, it would be limited.
Is there any way that whoever wrote that up could be here at a meeting to kind of go?
Well, he's our, yeah, he, a lot of times he is here because he is our.
What's the, what's the intended goal of the ordinance?
Yeah, I mean, what's been the big issue with, with, I don't, I haven't had.
Cause there's a state burning law, already in effect.
This is from the new fire chiefs who it's from.
Oh, from Doug?
Yeah.
I'm just wondering what the fines are in similar.
Yeah.
I'm just wondering what the fines are in similar towns and.
I, 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 I can't see, especially in a town like this, how you can find anybody a thousand dollars, hell, you can't give them a federal sewer bill or the trash bill, how you gonna give and pay a thousand dollar fine?
And very few people have a yard large enough for that size fire in town.
Right.
Well, he's, Ron said that in his town, it was.
Three foot.
Smaller, it's three foot.
I burned bigger than that, never had any complaints.
Yeah, not, yeah, I've, I've.
You're kinda, where you're at though is kinda nice, I mean, you got that whole end of the street.
I've only wrote one ticket the whole time, I've been there twenty-three years, one, one ticket, he's a firefighter, I wrote it to.
Well, it's cause he.
And the gun shop over now.
He was winning, butt head that night.
Yeah.
My question is why? Why is this ordinance all of a sudden coming up? Has there been a?
The new fire chief, you had, you had a, a change in fire chiefs.
Are they trying to make it like other, other towns?
I, I haven't.
That might be the case.
Opportunity to really talk to him, sit down and talk to him about that ordn- or that suggested ordinance is all it is.
I mean, what would be the, the violation that, that, that would warrant a thousand dollar fine? I mean, we don't do that when dogs fight people.
Well, it, I think right now, the way our fire owners read is that if you, if it's a, a small fire, it's gotta be tended to. It can't be real big, you can't burn mattresses, you can't burn furniture, you can't burn unclean wood.
If it emits black smoke.
Exactly.
Which made that.
That was me and you that were talking about.
It's the Indian state law.
Right.
Yeah.
Thirteen seventeen nine dash one.
Yeah, I think it's the IDAM regulation. That they usually put out like a nice pamphlets out for people to.
So that's nice if, if somebody takes a new, takes over a job and they're gonna, uh, check into things and there's nothing wrong with that. Nothing wrong with looking into it, but, you know, I can't see a thousand dollar fine, but.
Yeah, it seems quite excessive.
We'll see.
I mean, if they, uh, if they were doing something that is dangerous, where a fire could get loose and it, it was reckless, yeah. But I mean, if someone's just cooking a.
Could your garden hose put out a ten foot by ten foot fire? Then it's probably unsafe in a, in a tightly packed, you know, area like this.
Who'd that guy like at, well, no, not, not here in town.
Town, and you got a big backyard or something, but if you tried to do that buddy's yard.
Yeah.
I got a decent side, we're gonna put on this lot right here, this double lot that's.
Yeah, if you're not within, you know, fifty foot of another structure.
Ten by ten? Dude, I wanna be more than fifty foot away from that.
So, should that be changed?
I, I would not. Most people.
Ten by ten.
No.
Oh, wait, well, that was just what it suggested.
Yeah.
Oh, yeah, you could, you wouldn't want it at ten by ten, that's a hundred square feet or.
Well, that, that's not a lot of heat.
Yeah.
If you were gonna do a fire that size, you should have the fire department.
There.
You know, at least aware, so that it's a volunteer fire department. That doesn't mean someone's always there. So if you're gonna burn a big hot fire, your garden hose isn't gonna put it out. So, you probably being, you know, it's a, it's a densely populated area, a lot of houses. You probably would wanna have the fire department there if you're gonna burn.
Right.
Something that, that big and that hot.
That fire that me and Ron responded to right here, just right outside a town by the speed limit sign, that started by a two foot fire.
Mm-hmm.
That spread like that on grass, that you, wasn't, wasn't that dry? But it, it lit.
No, it wasn't really that dry.
Well, normally when it's, when it's dry like that, the county comes out with a no burn anyway. But then you can't, what are you gonna do? Find somebody a thousand dollars, cause they burned when there was a no burn warning out?
Well, now, that's a state violation.
County and state charge or something like that.
That's a state law, what's gonna happen if you don't pay your, your state fine? They're not gonna put a lien on your house, they're gonna come, put a warrant out for your arrest, take you to jail.
Yay, three hots and a cot, don't gotta worry about that.
Some people don't wanna go to jail though.
Yeah, some people don't.
I don't look good in orange.
You don't wanna go back, do you? Okay.
So, you guys wanna go through this and make it the way you want it?
Let me, let me see that, Nina, let me see, I'm just curious.
I don't think they're all committed to do anything.
No, we're not. This is just what he's suggesting as the new fire chief, that's what I keep emphasizing.
Just making sure.
Yeah.
Uh, South Main Street dog issue, I think we beat that horse to death. Uh, going to court in November. Uh, approval of warrants. These are warrants?
You wanna make a copy of it?
Yeah.
That's the Life Link LLC, Rick.
Who what?
Life Link LLC.
How mu- how much was it for?
Four hundred and fifty-four dollars. Says police.
Yeah, that's, that's the pads.
Oh, the pads.
Yeah, I had to think a second, cause I, I don't spend that kind of money usually. Yeah, you'd have to also, cause it, cause it talks about here that the open burning provisions are enforceable by Clay Township Fire Department, Wayne County Sheriff's Department, Green. Typically, county sheriffs are not able to enforce town ordinances.
No, we're not.
Yeah, so I, I, yeah, I'm not sure how that's.
Most of our town ordinances, they come right off state statutes anyway.
Right.
The majority of them, so.
But, yeah. I mean, really, I mean, it's, uh, it's good to have something that you can do, that the town can control locally.
All we'll need to do is we need, we'll need to lay this out with the current, uh, burn that we have now and balance too, maybe take some stuff out of this and put it in that one. Uh, but yeah, I don't think there's any danger of having to pay a thousand dollar fine or something. I'll make a motion to accept the warrants.
I'll second that.
Motion's been made, properly seconded, to accept the warrants. All in fairness, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed say the same.
You need to include payroll in that, if you're approving payroll.
Payroll, yeah. Yeah, that was payroll. Payroll and the warrants.
No, I thought we just said warrants and covered them all. So we'll sign these. Anybody have anything?
That one.
Going once?
The state laws on the back.
I'm making motion, we adjourn the meeting.
I'll say.
Motion's been made, properly seconded, to adjourn the meeting. All in fairness, say aye. Thank you.